Thank you. Councilmember Daniel Damian?
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia?
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez? Councilmember Paul Hernandez?
At this moment, I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Hernandez. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? If not, go ahead, City Clerk, continue.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Alejandra Avila?
Here.
Mayor Emmanuel Estrada?
Here.
Planning Commissioner Eric Benioff? Planning Commissioner Jen Escobosa? Planning Commissioner Ricardo Vazquez?
Here.
Vice Chair Mario Masiel Jr.?
Here.
And Chair Joanna Valenzuela?
Here.
Thank you for that. And at this moment, I will open up Public Communications. City Clerk, I will defer to you.
Yes, we have one speaker, Ted Jimenez.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, council members and commissioners. My name's Ted Jimenez, and I'm a representative for the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, representing over 50,000 members, 37,000 of those members here in Southern California. I'm here talking on behalf of the carpenters and to the housing element. And for record, wanted to make these points from the council. You know, our members who live in this local area, work in this area, we have quite a few. And the city council should require that a project be built utilizing a local skilled and trained workforce. Local hire and skilled trained workforce requirements reduce construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy. In a recent 2020 report titled "Putting California on the High Road: A Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2030," a California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upskilling California's workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. Moreover, just this year, in South Coast Air Quality Management District found that the use of local state-certified apprenticeship programs or skilled and trained workforce with a local hire component can result in air pollutant reductions. Other cities have not hesitated to apply skilled and trained workforce requirements for private development projects in their city. Recently, the city of Hayward in Northern California adopted skilled and trained workforce requirements into its city's general plan to municipal code. Local skilled and trained workforce requirements can boost economic development and mitigate transportation and greenhouse gas impacts by minimizing vehicle miles traveled. We're asking that you consider language in the housing element as to what I just spoke to, and we ask that you put this on the record. And I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. There was one written communication from Brandon Young that was received earlier today, and it was email to the city council and the commissioners. It will not be read at the meeting. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Seeing that there's nobody else looking to speak at this moment, I will close Public Communications. And I believe we move on to our study session, and it is presented by Genevieve Shero and Ron Garcia.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Planning Commission, and staff. Tonight's presentation is on the 2021-2029 General Plan Housing Element Draft Safety, Draft Health and Sustainability, and Environmental Justice Element. We're excited. As you know, we've been working really hard on getting this to you, so we're looking forward to presenting tonight's draft of the housing element in preparation for sending the document to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Without further ado, I will now hand it over to Genevieve Shero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, and good evening, Mayor and City Council and Commissioners. Thank you for having me here tonight to talk about this exciting project. Next slide. Oh, I'm not controlling? Oh. Gotcha. Okay, thank you. So tonight, we'd like to talk about just kind of how we got here today, all the process that we've gone to date. I know we have new planning commissioners, so please feel free to ask questions at the end if anything isn't clear, but I'll try and provide a bit of context for you as well. So I'll give a bit of the process to date, where we got to and how we got here today. And then I'd like to talk to you about four different documents tonight. The housing element, a little bit about the downtown specific plan, the environmental justice element, and the safety element tonight, and then talk through next steps. Next slide, please. And we'll just skip to the next slide. So on the process overview, so the project to update the housing and the safety and the city's existing health and sustainability element began back in August of 2020, about a year ago. Next slide. So between that point and May of this year, we did significance technical analysis and outreach to the community. So two community workshops were held along with bilingual surveys. The first workshop was held in December of 2020 to focus on housing needs and issues in the community. And we also had a community workshop in spring of this year to focus on environmental justice. And both of those workshops were paralleled with surveys that were distributed online for folks to kind of replicate the workshop. So if you weren't able to attend the workshop, you could respond with feedback to the community or feedback to us through those survey options. So in January of this year, we also held our first study session with the Planning Commission and City Council to talk about the housing element process, introduce the update, and get some preliminary feedback from decision makers. Next slide. So since then, we've had two more study sessions with the city council in June and most recently in August to discuss options for housing, especially in the downtown but elsewhere in the community as well. So these study sessions have been really, really helpful to help us refine the housing policies and develop the draft housing element that's out for public review right now. Next slide. So these public review draft elements on the housing, environmental justice, and safety elements have been available for the month of October to the public for their review. We sent invitations to comment on these drafts to a huge, long list of local stakeholders, including service providers in the community, as well as posting to social media on the city's Facebook page and to encourage folks to participate and give feedback on these draft documents. And this opportunity is another one tonight to get feedback from decision makers as well as the public about these draft documents. Next slide. So into the housing element, next slide. First, just a really broad overview of what a general plan is. So the three elements of the general plan that we're talking about, housing, environmental justice, and safety, are three chapters of the general plan. And the general plan's a really high-level policy document that guides decision-making for the community. It's intended to be quite long range in scope, generally about 20 years, although the housing element has a little bit of a different timeframe. And it's intended to guide the city in decision-making and be a blueprint for the future. Next slide. So the housing element is a pretty unique component of the general plan. It is one of the state-required elements or chapters of the general plan, but it is the only one that requires review and so-called certification from a state agency, and that is the HCD. I'll try and keep the alphabet soup to a minimum, but the California Housing and Community Development Department. So HCD takes a really careful look at every jurisdiction's housing element throughout the state to make sure that it is compliant with state law. So in addition to that, housing elements have a different timeframe. So there's an eight-year timeframe. This current housing element is technically due to be updated October 15th, 2021. And when we talked last time, we talked about the fact that there was a penalty for not adopting on time within 120 days of that October date, so that's February. That penalty has since gone away with new legislation adopted by, signed by the governor last month. So there is no more for your penalty anymore. The penalty is now linked to any required rezoning in order to accommodate the RENA, one more alphabet soup. And that is the regional housing needs allocation, which we'll talk about in a little bit. So that change is a nuance. It takes the rush off a little bit, but we're nearing the end and the completion here regardless. So that without, one other thing I wanted to note is that without a state-certified housing element, cities do face potential litigation. It is one of the most litigated sections of the general plan, in eligibility to qualify for funding and grants, and there can be future penalties in subsequent housing element cycles. State law also links updates to other components of the general plan to the housing element because it has this periodic update schedule. So that is why we are looking at these updates to address safety and environmental justice in the general plan. Next slide. So the other, one of the other reasons that the housing element's really unique is that it is just as much as it is a local policy document, it is also kind of a contract with the state to comply with state law. So the state has indicated this legislative intent that housing is of vital statewide importance, and it is the responsibility of local and state government to make sure that there are opportunities for housing at all different income levels in the community. Next slide. So if you look at the housing element, there are a few new programs that I just wanted to kind of bring your attention to. These are policies that will further those housing goals, to provide different opportunities for folks in the community. One of those is to consider an inclusionary housing ordinance, and this has been discussed with decision-makers and directed to look at this as an opportunity to provide more options for affordable housing as new market rate development comes in, to require a portion of those to be available to affordable, to lower-income households. There's also a number of programs that are generally intended to comply with state law that will require some tweaks to the zoning code. One of those is some minor revisions to the mixed-use-two zone in the zoning code to look at where commercial is required as part of mixed-use developments, and to also allow for a certain density on those projects that previously it was linked to the lot size, and now it would allow 30 units to the acre on any lot size in that area. And that's a requirement of state law. The zoning code updates also include a new program to adopt objective design standards. So this is a process to go back through the zoning code and make sure that there's no subjectivity in the zoning code, so that the process to develop housing is abundantly clear to developers and decision-makers and folks in the planning department who are reviewing applications. And this is consistent with the Housing Accountability Act requirements. We also have programs in the housing element to comply with state law with regard to accessory dwelling units and where they can be allowed, as well as new SB9 requirements. So SB9 is a new law that was just put in place in the last month that allows for certain single-family lots to allow a duplex and potentially split the lot. We also have a requirement or a program in the housing element to take a look at the zoning code's requirements for minimum unit size that exist today and either eliminate those or reduce those to allow more affordability by design. So smaller units tend to be more affordable, and we don't want to preclude those from developing because of a standard in our code. We also have some new programs to further facilitate supportive housing, which is housing that has services for folks who live there on-site, and transitional housing, which is a transitional housing for folks who are formerly homeless. And these are required to be allowed by right in zones, and so we have a requirement in the housing element to make sure that that's implemented. There's also a program to kind of further along the good work that the city's already doing to address homelessness through the Tiny Homes Program that's underway and the hotel and motel conversions, and working together with the Tri-City Collaborative to continue that good collaboration. In addition, there's low-barrier navigation centers. These are a type of shelter that state law now requires to be allowed by right in mixed-use and commercial zones. So that's another change to the zoning code as well. Next slide. So one of the other key components of the housing element is that RENA or the regional housing needs allocation. So the RENA is, it's a number of units. It's a target housing construction goal for each community. And the state agency, HCD, identifies kind of the whole need for Southern California. And then the Southern California Regional Government allocates that out to each individual jurisdiction. In Southern California, the need has been identified for 1.3 million new housing units over the next eight years. The methodology then directs it down to the local jurisdiction, and that allocation for Baldwin Park has been identified as 2,001 units over the next eight years. Next slide. So one of the key ways that the RENA will be met is through the downtown Baldwin Park specific plan. Next slide. So the downtown specific plan was adopted back in 2016 to really create a kind of vision for the downtown. And this 2021 update will do a few things. As directed by council, it will increase the maximum density from 30 to 40 units to the acre, so allow for a modest increase in density to allow for certain types of housing to develop within the district. It expands some of the boundaries to allow for some more flexible-type housing on the edges of downtown. It keeps maximum building height at four stories, however, there's no change associated there. And this, the revisions to the downtown Baldwin Park specific plan would also allow drive-through, like, not housing, but drive-throughs, just to note that that's also a change that's incorporated. So with these changes, and especially with the increase in density, we are able to meet the RENA. Without that change in density, we would not be able to meet the RENA without kind of more thought about where those sites could be met throughout town with other types of changes. So with these changes to the downtown specific plan, we are able to meet the state-mandated RENA. Next slide. So as I said, we can, we can meet the RENA. There are opportunities throughout the downtown, but also in other areas of town to meet the RENA that we identify in the housing element. In R1 zones, there's a few vacant lots, not many, but there are a few. We have some R3 zones that have potential to increase capacity. We also, on religious institutions, so there's a state law that allows for housing to be built on parking lots of churches and other places of worship. So we've identified those as well as potential sites for housing in the community. Next slide. So the update to the housing element also triggers this new state law requirement. Next slide. So this is to incorporate environmental justice into the general plan. So environmental justice is defined as the fair treatment and meaningful involvement of all people regardless of race, color, national origin, or income with respect to the environmental regulations and policies in place in a community. So this means that for fair treatment, no group should bear a disproportionate burden of negative environmental consequences resulting from governmental decisions and commercial operations and policies. So environmental justice seeks to correct some of these existing conditions and inequities with regard to pollution and health outcomes. So consistent with this new law, the city has an existing health and sustainability element. So the city was very proactive back in 2014 in addressing a lot of these issues in the community and adopted a health and sustainability element to really get right at this issue. So you're ahead of the curve there, which is great. And so the, this update really refines some of those policies and builds on the good work that's already being done. Next slide. So with an environmental justice lens, mapping can reveal areas that are disproportionately affected by pollution and other hazards that can then lead to negative health effects. This can be through pollution in air, water, or in the ground. So many of these areas are often located near freeways or near industrial areas. These areas, these areas also, though, in order to qualify for the state definition of where we're kind of looking at environmental justice needs, they also have to have higher populations of folks that are lower income. So these folks are also often sensitive populations with regard to health concerns, high risks of chronic health disease like asthma or heart disease. So the darkest orange areas on the map here, these are areas where these neighborhoods are scoring in the 95th percentile when you compare it to neighborhoods throughout the state for these kinds of conditions. So that's to say that these 95, so that's to say that these neighborhoods are faring worse than 95% of neighborhoods throughout the state. And the orange areas, all but the kind of light green on the south end and in the center of town, every other census tract or neighborhood is in the 75th or higher percentile. So these are what the state calls disadvantaged communities or environmental justice communities. Next slide. So one of the factors that we look to help increase health outcomes in these communities is park access. So other amenities that can be provided in the neighborhoods that can help create higher quality of life and better health outcomes. So participating in moderate exercise has many health benefits, and access to parks helps facilitate that. So this map shows the areas of Baldwin Park that are within a 10-minute walk. So the light green areas are within a 10-minute walk of existing parks. The dark green is a 20-minute walk. So a 10-minute walk's about a half a mile, and that's what's a comfortable distance for folks to really, really use local parks. So that's a great distance. We also have identified on the map, the city has some new parks coming in, which really add to the benefits, especially on the south side and some of the disadvantaged neighborhoods. These are four new pocket parks that would support the Big Dalton Wash Trail and the bike line that will go through there. So that's some great opportunity to provide additional access for folks in the community. Next slide. Through our outreach, we also heard from residents some concern about safety when walking and biking in town. So we looked at vehicle collision data, and show, this shows most of these vehicle and pedestrian or vehicle and bicycle collisions are concentrated in downtown or along the major corridors, Ramona and Baldwin Park Boulevard. These areas, of course, have higher traffic, both pedestrian and vehicle, so that is to be expected, but a focus on engineering streets to be safer and enforcing traffic regulations and, and really kind of an educational campaign about keeping folks safe on our streets can help reduce these types of collisions and enhance safety. Next slide. So in addition to those topics, new programs were also added to the element to focus on partnership building with community members and community-serving organizations to really facilitate a more inclusive and meaningful engagement process and closer access to decision-making with the city. Next slide. A focus on healthy and safe housing was also added to that element after talking with folks, and this includes looking for resources to support landlord and tenant mediation, as well as support technical assistance for weatherization and other rehab for low-income homeowners. Next slide. So an update to the safety element is also triggered by the housing element update. Next slide. So the draft safety element was updated. We consulted with the Chief of Police and LA County Fire to look at new risks that are associated with climate change. So that was really the focus of the law, is to look at climate change impacts and how that changes safety conditions in the community. So we looked at new risks associated with climate change. We updated emergency evacuation routes, and we provided some new policies to help support residents as climate change occurs and we see more extreme heat events and other impacts of climate change like bad air quality resulting from local fires. Next slide. So these programs do focus on coordination among agencies as these climate change influences like high heat events and wildflowers do occur more often, and also looking at how to ensure physical and mental well-being for, for all folks in the community. So in addition, we have a new program to develop a heat response plan to respond to those extreme heat events and ensure that communication is really effective from agencies, city government, out to the community, and that it's swift and effective communication. Next slide. So next steps, next slide. So we are happy to answer any questions that you might have tonight on these draft documents and receive any additional input from decision-makers in the public, and we'll take that input and incorporate that into these documents. And then we have two different paths moving forward after that. The downtown specific plan has a slightly different path than the housing and safety and health and sustainability elements because of that update and review process that the housing element has with the state. So the downtown plan will move forward with environmental review here in the rest of the winter, looking to be returned back to the Planning Commission for your consideration in January. The general plan amendments will be a little bit delayed. So every housing element throughout Southern California right now is going through two rounds of review with the state agency, HCD. They have 60 days to review it each time, so that is a bit of a prolonged process, so that extends that timeline out a little bit. So we expect that to happen here in November and December, and then again in February and March, and then returning to the Planning Commission and eventually to the city council, Planning Commission in March and city council in April of 2020. And that, I believe, is the last slide. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Well, I think we were all expecting a longer presentation, so I guess that's good. The housing element is never this short, so we're all surprised. But thank you, thank you for that presentation. And I just wanted to ask if you could share those, that PowerPoint with us, because I think there's a lot of important information there, especially regarding our accessibility to, to the parks. And then you mentioned a lot about the freeway area and how it all works and the 95%, so just asking if you could share that with us. And then, any other council members or staff or commissioners have any questions? You can go ahead.
Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
It's Councilmember Monica Garcia. I'm sorry that I'm not present at the meeting, but I do want to thank Genevieve and all of our staff for the hard work leading up to tonight. I know that there are a couple of iterations, and I certainly appreciate all the, the work that you've done and, you know, your input and your responsiveness to our questions and, and feedback. So thank you. I have a couple of questions. One, with regard to where did we land on the non-conforming legal uses? And second, I'd like to know where we stand as a city with regard to the disadvantaged communities. Where do we fall in terms of the percentage?
Thank you. So for the, the non-conforming uses, could you clarify your question on that one? Or Ron, I think, might have a response to that one.
Probably.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia. So in where we left off with the non-conforming section of the downtown specific plan, essentially any uses that are non-conforming are allowed to increase to a specific percentage, not a, a large percentage, and be able to continue operations as they please for that period of time. Once it exceeds a threshold, they would have to comply with the, the requirements of the downtown specific plan, which is a pretty typical requirement when you're dealing with non-conformities, not only in specific plans but in, in general areas throughout the city.
Okay, Ron, so did we go up to 50%?
Fifty, um, hold on one sec. Let me just pull that up.
Okay. Okay. Maybe while you look for that inform, oh, go ahead.
If, while I'm looking for that exact section, maybe Genevieve can answer the other.
Yeah, that's a good idea, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I was just pulling up the health and sustainability element as well. So the, the, the data source that we use is called CalEnvironScreen. And that is the data that's pulled throughout the state to look at those pollution burdens and the population characteristics that lead to the, the definition of disadvantaged or environmental justice communities. And that CalEnvironScreen process, I recall back from 2014, that was one of the impetus, impetuses for, impeta? For, or doing that health and sustainability element because Baldwin Park showed as a community, one of the worst in the state. So the way that they cut the data today doesn't necessarily elevate an entire community, but really we're looking at the differentiations within a community. So this is why we're looking at kind of, you know, most of the, the census tracts are either 75% or 85% or 95 percentile in comparison to the state. I'd have to cut the data again to see how Baldwin Park compares to other communities. But it is still up there as far as having high pollution burdens and these population characteristics that tend to lead to difficult health outcomes.
And thank you for sharing that information. I think it's important for the council and the planning commission to take that into consideration as we move forward on the development of our city. Because I would bet that a lot of the impacts come from the freeways and the surrounding industrial uses that really fall within the neighboring cities. And, you know, it's great that we're looking to create more parks and I know that that's something that we've endeavored, you know, in the past as well to do. But if our air quality, you know, is, 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 it creates environmental justice, you know, issues, then the question is even as our kids and families are out at the parks, what are they breathing in? What are they being introduced to? What are they being exposed to? And so, you know, just something for us to consider, that's very valuable information. And it's just unfortunately a reality in our community. And that's where we can start thinking of, you know, clean, cleaner burning fuels and whatever we can do to mitigate any of the environmental impacts, you know, as we develop our city. So thank you for sharing that, Genevieve. It's very important for us to keep that in, in mind moving forward.
Thank you so much. And I think we can also take another look too. We have, we have a lot of good policies and programs in here. But, but hearing those comments as well, we can take another look and see if there's anything else that we can add to kind of target that, such as really encouraging a greater tree canopy. And we have some policies in there. But perhaps we can put something even stronger in that, in the, in the element to, for instance, require on point-of-sale each lot to put a street tree in. So things like that to really increase the tree canopy, that the air quality improvements that come out of increased tree canopy can't be understated. So policies and programs like that could also be incorporated.
Yes, we are definitely open to any of your recommendations because, you know, it's something that we really need to incorporate at a substantial level, I think, as we move forward. And, and we have, you know, improved our parks and planted trees and, but it's, it hasn't been, you know, in the way that you just mentioned where it becomes part of, of development standards. So that, I'd definitely be open to those recommendations, thank you.
Mayor?
Mayor, full time.
We just, we just, we have one more question though. Sorry, Ron was gonna answer the second question. Sorry about that.
No, it's okay, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Garcia. So yes, that's 50%. And I can read you the exact section. So a non-conforming building or other structure may be added to, provided that in addition of 50% or more of the floor area of existing as of the adoption of the downtown shall trigger compliance. So that 50% is in the, in the document.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, full time.
Yes, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Genevieve, thank you, Ron, for this great presentation and all the stuff that has been involved. I, I believe it's the first time I see the, that map with the disadvantaged community. Can you put that map back on, please? That's very concerning. I know in the past, when I was a city clerk, I know Monica Garcia and now Senator Rubio were pushing for trees and in the environment. I had no idea Baldwin Park scored so high in a, in the sense that the pollution is so high here in the city. The other one with the orange, please? And it is very concerning on, on how unhealthy our, our areas here in the city are, our environment. So I agree with Ms. Garcia that we definitely need to continue and look for other ways so that we can improve the air quality so that it can help increase the health of our residents. How is it, how do you measure these? I see this little green section that the quality is lower, it's still pretty high, 74%. But how is it that there's little pockets of better air quality? I can understand right there on Ramona, near the freeways. It, it's really bad, but that little section, how does that happen? Can you explain that to me? I'm not sure how you read these if we're all in the same city. How does one little pocket of the city score lower?
Right, that's a great question. And so this data, it, it aggregates lots of different sources. So it looks at existing air quality, but that's not the only source. It also looks at proximity to landfill or potentially groundwater contamination. So areas close to landfills also have, have concerns. So it looks at all of those pollution characteristics. So it could be higher in one and a bit lower in another. And altogether, those, if, you know, a, a particular census group could have all three of those types of pollution burdens within it. And it also then compounds that with the population characteristics. So if an area is higher income, it kind of lessens the, the pollution burden from this, from this analysis. So, and this also is looking at census tracts. So it's not as cut and dry as squares on the map as it kind of looks. But it is the way that the data is cut through census tracts. Does that answer our question?
Yes. So have you worked with communities that the percentages are so high and then based on whatever we have, they have implemented? Have you seen the percentages go down? Is there a way to do that for a community? I know we're near freeway, so that makes a big impact. And like you explained, the rest of the areas that you measure. With whatever you put in place, have you seen the pollution go down?
That's a, that's a great question. So a lot of these policies and programs have actually been in place since 2014 with the health and sustainability element. And it, I, Baldwin Park has gotten a little bit better. A lot of this data is, is new. So we don't have a lot of kind of comparative data for other jurisdictions because most jurisdictions, you were ahead of the curve. Most jurisdictions haven't done this, they're doing it right now. So we don't have a lot of, of clear data on that. But what we do know is that there are things that we can do to enhance air quality largely linked to trees. And we can also have things like more monitoring in local parks and other places so that we can react more quickly to, to local air conditions. We also know that there are better health outcomes that come with encouraging folks to be more active. So a lot of the policies that are in place through the downtown specific plan and other things that really create a, a complete streets atmosphere for folks to walk and bike easily throughout the community, these are things that we kind of know that can have better health outcomes and can contribute to creating a more healthy environment for Baldwin Park.
Okay. Well, it's obvious that the whole city, we need to increase a healthier Baldwin Park. But I'm very concerned about the darker orange. I'm concerned about all of Baldwin Park, but the darker orange, it gives us a better idea of the areas that need to be looked at immediately so that we can continue the progress and hopefully increase the, the healthy living for our residents. This is very helpful, thank you, I really appreciate it, Genevieve.
Thank you.
All right, I have a quick question. You mentioned that most regions in California have not yet reported. And so would it be fair to say that while that map represents that some areas are higher or more disadvantaged in terms of health outcomes than others, that that's only based on the, on the limited regions that have reported to California? So then my question is, would we expect that number to change once everybody else catches up?
That's a good question. And I think I wasn't clear in, in how I was framing that before. It's not, so this, this data and the mapping exercise is available for every region of, of California. So down to the census tract, it is all mapped. Most cities haven't put in place the environmental justice element to try, to address those. So that, that, that change or that improvement hasn't really been quantified at a statewide level.
I have a question. The number that you'd said earlier about the units that need to be built from here to, you said eight years? It's 2001, who comes up with that number?
Great question. So it's kind of a black box, but it starts at the state. It starts at the State Department of Housing and Community Development. They say 1.3 million for the entire Southern California region. And then the Southern California Association of Governments develops a methodology that allocates that 1.3 out to every single jurisdiction in LA County, San Diego, no, not San Diego, sorry, but Orange County, Riverside. All of the counties and all of jurisdictions within that get an allocation of a number of units that are needed in the community. So it's kind of a collaborative effort of everyone to address this regional housing need and, and break it down to what can each community do to put in place policies and programs to meet that need. And that number is not a construction obligation. It is, what is incumbent upon the city is to put in place policies and programs and in particular zoning that allows for that type of housing to be built. And put incentives in place as much as possible to encourage that housing to come and get built in the next eight years.
Thank you. I'm trying to get a general perspective of how is this gonna be feasible to actually put that many units in Baldwin Park as, as it feels like we're already overcrowded? And not only that, but just to think of the environmental impact on this. If we're saying that we have to allow that, that amount of units, that means there's more people here, that means there's more pollution. And, and so now we have not only that, more population, our surrounding cities that are building commercial. I'll give you an example of the map that you put up there that showed the orange. I feel like the orange section is just a little bit. I didn't see nothing highlighted in the area where 605 freeway goes all the way up to Los Angeles, per se. On Los Angeles, you have FedEx facility that was just put in not long ago, that you have trucks coming in and out of there. And that's right along Los Angeles, I'm sorry, Lower Zusa, Los Angeles. But therefore, my mentality is the, the pollution that's coming from the trucks that are coming in and out of there has to be up there. And this map doesn't highlight that particular area. We're up to what, in Ramona? I see Ramona there, but nothing above that.
Yeah, so, and again, a lot of that is kind of tricky about how the data is cut and far, as far as how proximate is it to, for instance, the gravel pits that may have, have an influence or, or, you know, certainly the freeway, I think, has, has the impact as far as, as that runs out. But with regard to, to the, to the housing element comments or questions that you had, a couple of things to keep in mind, I think. The, the housing element is intended to put policies in place to let the private market develop housing in a community. So that, so it, it is up to the private development to, to actually get housing built. The city itself doesn't build a lot of housing. That's not, that's not what, what cities tend to do. As far as, as the pollution component of new housing, the, the policies that are in place to really target new development in the downtown where there's good transit, where folks are hopefully using transit and walking and biking to the local services, less trips, that's kind of the intent around adding new units in, in kind of more active areas, better than kind of out with a two-hour commute into work. So that's part of the, the methodology in the RENA calculation from the regional government. And I think looking at smaller unit sizes and, and the fact that the RENA is also intended to support existing issues that are in place, including overcrowding and homelessness, the folks who don't have a home today or folks that are living in overcrowded conditions, those factors all go into that determination of the regional housing need allocation and are intended to address some existing conditions as well as just a ongoing demand for new housing in Southern California.
Thank you.
I have a few questions, or more like two. So thank you again for the presentation today. So going back a little bit to the disadvantaged chart that you had there, you mentioned to us who comes up with the numbers, right? And, and into how many units we need to build for certain timeframe. And my question to you is, if you happen to know the answer, what data do they actually use to come up with these numbers? Because I, I would really like to know, since it's across the border, across the state, how many homes does West Covina have to build? Or how many homes does San Marino have to build? Or Glendora or San Dimas, when those are more affluent communities?
Absolutely, and a great point. So the, there, there is a methodology that is linked to where better services and transit are. So again, trying not to put too much housing out in green field, undeveloped land that doesn't have infrastructure that will require a lot of incommunity. And this is a change from previous housing element cycles. Here this time, they're really looking at trying to develop that methodology to do that. There's also, in some jurisdictions, they did kind of a leveling of reducing the need for lower-income housing in communities that were already providing a lot of lower-income housing that was deed restricted. So there was a bit of a leveling. But across the board, the numbers were very high throughout Southern California and now in the Bay Area as well. Legislation changed as far as how these, this, the RENA will be kind of identified by the state. And so the numbers are very large because they are considering existing conditions that are being exacerbated. So, but we can provide the, the data that lists the RENA for all of the jurisdictions in the county, if you'd like to see that.
That'd be great, actually. Just because I was wondering if they were using the amount of homeless people that are also lingering around the different communities? That also makes up this number that they're asking per unit, per city? Because as we know, not all of our homeless people are originally from our cities. So they'll just come here because we're the corridor between the 605, the 10, the 210, and it's easier for them to hang out around here versus those who actually are from the community.
That's a good point. And I don't believe that the, 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 the most recent point in time homeless count is a factor in the RENA methodology, but I'd have to go back and, and read the methodology again to confirm that.
Perfect, thank you.
So one question, or a couple of questions that I have on my end. So I know during the housing, well, at least a specific page about the downtown specific plan, there is a mention about bumping up the density from 30 to 40. Was that units per acre? Is that right? I think you might have answered this already, but if you can just, I guess, emphasize a little bit more, if you can discuss sort of the positive impacts of increasing the density aside from achieving the RENA?
Sure thing. And Ron can also talk to this as well. But there are, there's, so in the, in the recent past, there hasn't been a huge influx of new housing in the downtown in response to the 2016 downtown specific plan. So there are certain types of housing development that can be supported with just a little bit more increase in density. And so the desire is that, you know, that the- And so um, the desire is that, you know, that the, that the plan can actually do what it's intended to do and really support that additional type of development that um, you know, supports that, that walkable downtown and provides the services and the, and the housing for folks who live here. Um, and different types of housing. We heard in the, in the housing element um, from the survey that one of the key considerations for residents was to make sure that the kids, their kids who are growing up in Baldwin Park can stay here as young adults and have a place to, to call home in Baldwin Park in the future. So that really calls to kind of a, a different type of housing, a different housing type to accommodate these different needs. Um, about seventy-one percent of the housing stock in Baldwin Park is single-family housing. Um, so there's not a lot of opportunity for young professionals to get into housing opportunities in the community. So these types of housing in the downtown would afford some of those opportunities for folks as well. So those are a few of the benefits. And Ron, Mike, do you have anything else to add?
Sure, that, thank you. And then the, the other question I have is, as far as the maximum um, height of four stories in the buildings, um, can you tell us a little bit more about sort of that justification, um, or how that, how that decision was reached?
Sure, and that is um, that is what's allowed today. So that's not, the, there's no proposed change. And we heard from council that um, going up to five stories didn't feel like a comfort level that um, met with the desires of the community. So in the previous drafts, it was looked at five stories and that was brought back down to the existing specific plan requirement of four stories.
Thank you. And then just uh, once, one of the same, thank, thank you so much for the presentation, but also I was a participant in the housing element as far as getting the community feedback. So I appreciate the marketing that was done as well as just sort of the online surveys for the folks who couldn't attend um, those um, sessions via Zoom, et cetera. So again, it felt as a community resident or a part, a participant, I did feel extremely welcome. So I appreciate all that time and effort.
Great, thank you so much. And thanks for participating.
Great, thank you. So uh, just double checking real quick, if any other council members have any questions or concerns or any other commissioners, it seems like everybody had a chance to ask some questions.
I have one last question, sorry, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
As far as the studies that were made, uh, what was the outcome on that? What was the feedback you guys got from that? And only because I um, I think I heard you say you guys had one in December of twenty-twenty and we're, we're in a pandemic still and I'm trying to figure out.
Yes, so we had, that's one of the reasons we had those parallel surveys, um, to really bolster that participation. So the meeting that we had back in December, we didn't have a huge turnout. Um, historically Baldwin Park hasn't had a huge turnout for, for engagement. Back in the, the health and sustainability element, we were able to um, really draw up a lot of support by being out front in front of the fair and having people weigh in. So looking for those events, it was definitely a challenge this time because of COVID and the fact that we were all virtual um, during these, the times that we needed to do this um, in order to meet these state deadlines. Um, so we did have a hundred and ten respondents to the housing survey and I think it was a hundred and twenty-three respondents to the environmental justice survey. So if we kind of think about just traditional old-school public engagement of having folks show up for a meeting and thinking twenty people is great, we got um, one benefit of, of the virtual parallel is that we got way more insight from a broader spectrum of folks um, than those who are usually able to attend a meeting on a, on whatever night it is. So um, that's, that's kind of the level of, of input that we got.
Okay, and the last question I have is in regards to uh, there not being any fines uh, put among us, but you said it was put up, but towards RENA?
So there is not a construction obligation, so there's no penalty. I think, I think what you're referring to is that there is no penalty for missing the adoption date.
Right.
So we're not fined for that, but there is potential for this, the Attorney General to sue you and fine you if that, if it's found that the housing element does not comply with state law. And that includes showing that you can meet the RENA.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So I think this uh, this is the end of our presentation and our Q and A. Um, I believe we do have a um, Councilmember Damian requested we go into a closed session after this, but we are currently waiting on our city attorney. So I think we can recess, and I'm closing the meeting for twenty-five minutes. And then I guess this is also time for everybody to clear out the room and then we can go from there. So thank you, commissioners uh, for being here today. I believe this is our first joint meeting with a new commission. So very nice. I, I think you guys got very lucky because normally our housing element goes on pretty long. But it just seems like this was just a review, so I think we all prepped, you know, we were talking about it, we all prepped. So um, but yeah, so you know, thank you all of you for, for the work and I know it's been a, a long discussion. So I'm looking forward to it. And you know, we'll keep working with our commissioners. So once again, thank you everybody for being here. And then we'll just take a, a small recess until our uh, city attorney arrives.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, commissioners.
Mark, we're gonna be going into the closed session link, right? We're getting off of this one?
Yes, we'll go to the closed session. But you did say we are, we're about twenty-five minutes away until they, they notify me so we can start it.
Okay, so we're about twenty, twenty-five minutes out?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
All right.
See you then.
Thank you, see you guys.
Bye.
Bye.